All right, thank you for your patience. We're getting a little, starting a little later tonight into our workshop prior to. So at this point, I'd like to call order North Fondland School Board Meeting, Monday, September 23rd, 2013, at 7:10. Next item is roll call. Chisholm.
Here.
Duffy.
Here.
Dobbs.
Here.
Pele.
Here.
Next. The next item on the agenda is report on public notices.
Public notices and agendas were mailed to the Fondland Concorde Radio Station, KFIZ, KFIZ 107, and WFDL Radio, and agendas were posted at the District Office, US Bank and Municipal Building, on Friday, September 20th, 2013.
Excellent. Next is pledge allegiance. Please stand.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes. Any board members have any changes needed? Seeing none, we will approve the minutes as presented. Next item on the agenda is a treasuries report. Mr. Chisholm.
Mr. President, cash balance on hand, August 26th, was $1,303,287.69. Total receipts for the same period, $1,711,47.62. Cash on hand balance, September 23rd, 2013, $4,914.91. And also, to be approved is payment of bills in the amount of $909,388.19.
How big the motion?
A second.
Second. Mr. Pele. Discussion. Any questions from board members? Seeing none, roll call. John, you made that one.
Yes, I did.
Duffy?
Yes.
Pele?
Yes.
Chisholm?
Yes.
And Chuck?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is clerk's report. Mr. Hawke.
Duffy right now.
Excellent. And the next item on our agenda is student council report. Before that, I will have Mr. Sandow introduce our new council representative.
Excellent. And we're very fortunate to have Pa Bang being representing Horace Mann High School and the students of the school district in North Fondland. Last year, she also sat in for a meeting, so this is not her first meeting, but we're looking forward to having her be here and being the voice of the students and having to sit in that seat on the board. So Pa, welcome very much and thank you.
That's the first three kids from San Francisco students from the same county that have served in this position.
This week is homecoming week. Today was pajama crazy hair day. On Tuesday, we will be having salad dressing and Disney Day. Salad dressing as in Caesar is romaine or toga and ranch as in cowboy. Wednesday is superhero and twin day. Also on that day, at 6:30, is the powder puff game along with the pep rally at 7:15 and the bonfire to follow.
That was Wednesday?
Wednesday.
Wednesday.
On Thursday, it is class color day, and that is when we are having our pep rally or spirit Olympics. On Friday, at 4 o'clock, is the parade, and the football game is at 7 o'clock. That day is also Oriole Pride Day. On Saturday is the homecoming dance. The theme this year is up, up, and away, and that is from 8 to 11:30. We are also selling pizza at lunch to raise money for the student council, along with selling spirit items such as beads and makeup, as in paint. Changes this year that we have done are banner decorating instead of hallway decorating. We think that it will make it easier for all the classes since the hallways are so long.
Quick question. Is that a change in data in the bonfire? Hall talking newsie was it Thursday's? I'm just trying to recall. It's always Wednesday.
It's always Wednesday.
I'm off there, so it's on the, all right, Wednesdays. All right, thank you. All right, moving along. Thank you for that information. Appreciate it. Next item on the agenda is citizen input. At this time, I will open up citizen input at 7:15. Any citizen wish to be heard? Please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Quixote here, 702 Florida Avenue. Just a couple of things I want to ask about it. I asked Mr. Chisholm about if there was a capital improvement plan, and you guys are currently talking about like a five-year plan for buildings alone, or is there a capital improvement plan for the school district? Curious. Is there, is there anything like that? I mean, because I know when I talked to you earlier this year, we talked a little bit about PELC future plans, where I'm just kind of curious if there is a plan we could gather, like, I would like to be a part of that if you're looking for meeting members. Is there anything coming out like that, or just like talking about PELC?
I would say, I would say we want to be starting next year, a year from now.
Okay.
The big thing for us is looking at what our current facilities are, and then also looking at our referendum debt that's at the high school, and how that all kind of goes together. Because right now, when we do our maintenance on our buildings, we're looking at some that we're investing and maintaining really well, and in other words, it's almost like we're just trying to hold so that, because we don't want to, our return on investment for any of our investments as far as our building, we want to make sure you're doing it the right way. But we're looking probably, I'd say, a year from, one or two years from now that we would, I would, that's what I'd definitely have.
Yes, I think the biggest thing is with Mr. Mann coming on to director of grounds and buildings, obviously getting his input, working with the administration, just to give him a good idea, obviously spending probably a year with the unit, now getting his feet wet into the program, now finding out, you know, where do we really stay. We've been fortunate not to have any major things, and we've had money in our account if needed, if we need to be done, but with his expertise and again using the administration, I think that'll definitely help us see what we need to do for the future, and has worked with administration down, you know, what does the future hold for our district? Looking at the years, building, and are we going to have, are we outgrowing our capacity? So those things will come into play, and absolutely, when that comes up, my, my suggestion to you would be call Mr. Sandow and then.
When we had the conversation earlier this year, that's what my question was with the 2018 one, the referendums, are we going to see that cost savings and taxes, you know, tax wise? Okay, thank you. Also, just wondering what the status was. I know the, the school district was looking at possibly purchasing the property next to the property purchased last year in North the Friendship Driveaway, and just wondering where that's at. Is that, is that something you're still planning to do, or?
You get it, doesn't. Yep. We don't know. The gentleman just passed away. I don't really know what the, on what cost it'd be, how it would look, so there's, there's a lot of that discussion that, that we have to be, and that would all, those conversations we have in the future, if it does come up for sale.
Okay. I guess one of the reasons I'm asking about that is because the property that the school district did own, I've gotten questions from folks asking why that property isn't maintained like everybody else is expecting in the village.
Oh, I didn't hear about that.
Well, I mean, I've got, and I, and I talked to Chuck, and he said that the school district has different, they follow ordinances or different rules or whatever, they have a little bit more leeway, because like, you know, rolled up fencing, you know, stacks of pallets, a semi trailer in the backyard. So people are asking like a girl project, girl sitting on the driveway. So I've gotten questions, so I, and I told them, the school district owns that property, and I said, they're asking why that property isn't maintained like they're expected to maintain their property. And so that's why I'm asking, you know, I mean, is there any plans to clean that up? That's, that's another concern also, because we don't want that garbage, I mean, I think all you guys drive by that on your way home, so you get to see it every day. So I mean, there is a concern, you know, I mean, people have that perception when they're driving through the village, because they're thinking that the village isn't doing their job, you know, trying to get.
I've heard nothing from anybody about any concerns with it.
Yeah, no questions for me.
Well, have to tell me, but we'll definitely address that. That, that semi is going to be gone within the next few months. We got that for very inexpensive, because we have a lot of storage we're trying to clean up, do things, and it was an old place to go with it, so we're renting that. And then the pallets and everything else, when we have an opportunity to, to first storage, we will definitely take care of that.
Okay, because I talked to Chuck, and he said he talked to somebody in the school district, said there was plans to raise that garage or something, and, or something, and I'm just wondering, you know, I thought it may be done this summer and that we cleaned up, or something. It just looks awful.
I've never heard awful, and I, and we'll definitely, we're not under other, we'll definitely work on that. First I've ever heard it looking bad.
Okay. And just one other thing, I just wanted to let the board know that the first Monday, I don't know what date is exactly, but the first Monday for the village board, we're going to have the overpass discussion. I don't think we'll be deciding anything, but I just, I would just want to bring to your attention maybe if Aaron or any of the other school board members, I'd kind of like to see what your guys' input is as far as, you know, you guys aware that we're going to abandon that intersection or that railroad crossing?
You're closing this.
We're closing. We're, well, yeah, we're kind of, we're calling and abandoning for right now. I mean, I don't know what the legal, whatever, if we can go back and reclaim that or whatever, but, but the first Monday in October, that is going to be an agenda item, so if anybody is interested in coming, we sure would like to have your opinion, you know, regarding, you know, having folks on the school district out there, make sure, and see what you guys are thinking also about that, you know, what our plans are.
Are the overpasses back on the table?
Well, it was never off. It was never off. But, you know, but that's, that's something that I asked the administrator to put on, because if we're shutting down that intersection, I want to have that discussion as a safety issue, you know, cost a little less, so if you guys are interested, I just want to.
What does it start?
Six.
Six on the seven.
It's a seven.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, it's a six. I don't know where in the agenda it will be, but I just called Chuck before this meeting and said that we verified it will be on our board meeting.
If the board has anything, again, I'll definitely be there, represent, or to, just to, also as a community member, but if you need anything, let me know, I'll be there.
And if you know, I mean, if you guys talked to the community, if you know anybody that's interested, please ask them to come, because we really like everyone's input. So thank you.
All right. Is there any other citizens wishing? Please state your name and address.
Joan Glatz, 439 Hiller Avenue.
Okay.
I just got a, I don't know, maybe you've talked about this earlier, the voucher program that they're throwing at us. Did any of our students go into that?
Mr. Sandow will be the one to answer that for you.
I had two student families that had registered here, and then they called back and said that they had got entry into the springs and got vouchers and asked for return on their fees. Other than that, I don't know specifically if they have. Of the 20 students that were at, that got the vouchers, I believe 15 of those were already at the springs.
Yep.
So, and that's 70, I believe it's 77% of the students that are receiving the vouchers right now have already been at those schools. So really, and that, that's considered a, they said it was just an oversight, but that's not going to change. I'm sure they're not going to take that money away. So as far as our district goes, the impact it's had on us, later on, I'll, I'll just report now, our actual third Friday enrollment is that we're at 46 kids. So when we look at, we're, I think we might be one of a handful of districts that's not a suburban district like the Wauwatosa or Milwaukee Suburban District, Green Bay Suburban District, that's actually increasing in, in enrollment. So we haven't, at this point in time, seen, I think, maybe two students that I know of, and I don't even know if they ended up going or not, because they just said, we got accepted and, and don't know if they'll be back or not, but they, our doors are always open.
Then the other question I have is, the GOP is now saying that these people that go to this voucher thing do not have to, what is that? Be tested?
Correct.
Like they aren't here? I mean, they're really nailing us, I think.
There's no, there's no accountability for the money going to private institutions.
No, no. And I don't think this is fair. Are we doing anything about that?
Well, the biggest thing is contact your local representative, because that's all you can do. I mean, I know the administration.
For us, it'd be Michael Schra, for our assemblyman, and our, and our senator is Rick Goodix.
Oh, Goodix.
State level.
Okay. Okay, sorry.
I know our staff has worked hard in understanding what the voucher, the impact it has, but bottom line, they need to hear from the citizens, because they need to hear from enough of them, but they've already made their decision what's happening.
I've gone to these things that they have, you know, these talking jobbers, and you can tell they're not the least bit interested in us. All they want is to push this through, and, and I, I was under the impression it wasn't going to cost taxpayers anything. Well, now, all of a sudden, it is.
The voucher program is 100% on Wisconsin tax credit.
Yep.
And it's funded before regular education.
Absolutely.
But that's what, that's one, I think that's a saving grace also, is that it isn't funded anything, oh, it's state-funded, and if it gets bigger, the state's got to fund that first, so if there isn't money for that, that's 100% from their voucher. It's 500 this year, 1,000 next year.
Yep, yep.
So we'll see. It's a $700,000 next year entitlement program. We'll see where that goes.
Well, we got to nail the end. And I feel bad for North Fondland, because I'm sure our teachers are doing everything they have to do. And to make them look bad, which is what I've been reading in the newspapers, is not fair. Not at all. But that's my opinion, you know? Teachers, I think our teachers, and not just North Fondland, Fondland too, they're doing a great job. You know, and it's, it just irritates me, knowing what these people are trying to do to us, but, I'm sorry. Okay, go ahead.
Any other questions, ma'am? Do you have, do you have any other questions?
No, that's fine.
Can I just add something?
Sure.
If you contact those, you may want to also bring up something I think is a much bigger issue than the voucher program, and that's the $10,000 tax credit that people who send their kids to private schools are starting to get now, which is also costing, you know, us as taxpayers in the state, and, and it's something that probably was more important to those people all along than the voucher programs.
I love to write letters, and I've done it.
Thank you. Thank you. One last time, any citizen wish to be heard? Seeing none, we will close the citizen input at 7:27. Next item on the agenda is superintendent's report.
Thanks, Mr. Duffy. We already welcomed Pa, so welcome. Thank you very much for being here. Next one I'm going to do is, I'll just briefly go over and show on the internet, I know that we talked about our report cards ad nauseam during the first two hours prior to this at our board workshop. I've sent out information, talked about it also, the school district, our school district, as well as all 435 school districts, and our private, all have accountability, new report card, and I actually believe that this is a very good thing, and it helps to look at things and look at that and information. And what it's been able to show us is that we have some work to do, and it's also shown us that we've had a lot of successes in many different areas. What I'm going to do, this really quickly, is go online and show you where it's at, and if anybody wants to access more and I can answer any questions, I know, probably except for, probably except for you two guys, everybody's heard about these report cards ad nauseam, we've talked about them, and explained a lot of information, and the reality of it is, there's work that we can do. It's based on the WKC test, that's one piece of data that's taken in November, and we firmly believe that our students will be able to show better and better in how they can do, and we look forward to that test in November, and this is the last year that that test will be here, something will take over called the Smarter Bounce. So the future, I think in our district, we have a lot of things that we can celebrate, and there's a lot of work that we need to do, and we look forward to doing that. So if you go to our, our website, www.nftlschools.org, that top address bar, don't worry, it goes back to a different thing, but at www.nftlschools.org, they'll bring you to this. There's many different links, but you can also just go right here to the report card information, and down there, you will see that our district has 67.7, which is meets expectations, and that's overall district. This is the first year that a district had a report card, and our district did, did quite well. And the key thing about these report cards is that it looks at four main factors. It looks at achievement, which is the WKC exam, looks at growth, that growth means where the students start, and then where are they at the next year? Did they grow average? Did they grow great? Or did they not grow at all? Closing the gaps, it looks pretty much at subgroups, and how those subgroups compare to non-economically challenged white Caucasian students. And we have two subgroups. We have special education, and we also have students that are struggling, families are struggling economically, and that's the students that qualify for free and reduced lunch, and you can see that in our district. Our free and reduced lunch rate is close to 50%, over 50% actually at elementary school. So the closing gaps looks at how are those subgroups doing compared to the white Caucasian, non-economically strapped, or very bold students? And then on track for post-graduation or readiness, and this looks at attendance, it looks at graduation rates, it looks at third grade reading, and it looks at eighth grade math. Those are some key indicators. As you can see, as a district, our achievement, we are below the state in achievement, and we realize that, and that's something that we know we need to improve on, and so we're looking forward to that. One of the things that we really are focusing on, and we're seeing our growth, this growth, one of our keys is, is that our goals are to have our growth be higher than the state, and right now, our growth is just a little bit below the state average. One thing that we're very proud of is, we do have students that come from many different places in their learning journeys. In our, in our county, we have the highest population of special education students and the highest population of students that have economically disadvantaged, and you can see that in closing gaps, how we're helping, that those subgroups continue to grow, we're beating the state average in that, and then on track, ready graduate for graduation, we're above the average there. And then we have zero deductions. This comes from having absenteeism, that's great, not enough kids taking the test, and also dropout rates. So overall, before, what happened is that mostly everything was looked at at this achievement level, and that has such change, so now there's other factors in, and where we rate that as it comes together for simple answers, because that's the community and deep education's a, an exciting but very complicated way to measure how we're going about helping students learn and impacting them. Overall, we meet expectations. Our goal as a district is to be at above 72 as a point, and this is not an average. Please do not take this as an average. This is just a, an addition of these different areas and they're weighted differently. So this doesn't mean that it's a D. It has nothing to do with average. It has to do with an algorithm about how many points you get for different areas that are weighted. So as you can see, and one interesting thing that I'll show you too, is that on our closing gaps, you can see as a district, we're really doing well. We're doing well, and I want you to remember that for a second. So if you go here, you can go and get to our report cards. This is a great video that Superintendent Hevers talks about 2014. We have our report cards here for this year, and more information about how to interpret them, and also letters that we sent home, and we also have report cards from the year before, last year and this year. This very quickly, Friendship Learning Center. Friendship Learning Center, you can see that meeting expectations, do a very good, they're above the average in student growth. Once again, achievement is our main focus. We have to have all of our students achieving, continue to grow faster and faster. Closing gaps, okay, and post, this right here, on track, post readiness, graduation, remember attendance rate and third grade reading achievement, that's an area that we need to definitely focus on and continue to grow. At Bessie Allen, Bessie Allen has the same score. You can see achievement once again is an area that we need to grow. Our growth here, we can realize more in reading and math growth, but our closing the gaps are really helping our students continue to improve, that are the most risk, of an on-track readiness right there. So we're at meets expectations. Our goal is to have all of our schools be at least and exceeds expectations at 72. At Horace Mann, you'll see that it says 59.4 meets few expectations. Student growth, there is nothing in student growth. One thing that's very, that, that needs to be understood about this report card, and at Friendship, it's third, fourth, and fifth grade, so you have three grade levels. At Bessie Allen, it's sixth, seventh, and eighth, so you have three grade levels. At the high school, it's 10th grade. It's 10th grade only. And right here, as you can see, there is no growth, because there is no test that the students take in ninth grade. They just take 10th grade, so there's no score there. On track, readiness, graduation, we're above the state average, closing gaps. Remember when I told you that we're at 73 points overall for the district? This is an anomaly that I could tell you that will change, because our cohort of takes a, of taking this class is 75 students of all, 75, 80 students that come. The students that come for our test are the ones that were with us a full year before they took the test. This class right here, when we look at data and we dive back into it, where we realize and we looked at that there was some struggles from closing the gaps of one of those subgroups that didn't do so well in math, and that's why we saw this drop, because of a subgroup of students that are struggling and their families are struggling, they didn't do as well as in math. That's, that's the, that's the reason we have a 59.4. But also, what we can do, and this is this, what these report cards are supposed to do is say, hey, if we want to impact all students wherever they are, be with students with disabilities, be it students that are struggling, and their families are struggling economically, or students that, that are, that don't have those variables, we need to up our game for everything. So I have absolutely no reservations or no anxieties about this significantly improving for next year. If you look at this score here, last year at Horace Mann High School, we were at a 72.3. So we were .7 points away from exceeding expectations, and then in one year go down to meets few expectations. That's going to be, as we look at, and one of the neat, what, I wouldn't say, yeah, one of the neat things for us is we continue to evolve as statisticians and looking at data so we can help all of our kids. We know that we have some other classes coming up that are struggling, and if we don't do some more interventions and work to utilize technology of not only instructional technology, but time and enhancement time, and really pointing in to help all students achieve, we could see other problems coming up that would reveal that maybe we do have to put more efforts in. But looking at this score here of last year, 72.3, this year, 59.4, that's a variability you see at the high school, and especially at a school that you have less than 100 kids. So next year, we're already anticipating this score being significantly higher, but we're not going to be okay with just significantly higher. Our goal for an entire district is that we should be above the state average in achievement, above the state average in growth, we should be above the state average at closing gaps, or right at the state average, because we want that gap to close, and once we get it closed, we can't get much credit on it, because it'll be closed. And we have a belief that we, our school district can be rated as exceeding expectations. So once, these came out last year, they're out this year again, and I really, really appreciate how this is utilized as a tool and a flashlight instead of a hammer. Originally, it was going to be used as a hammer to try to say, well, look at what this school's doing here, this school's not doing there, but the DPI and our, one of the things I think that our Assembly and Senate got right is, hey, this is a tool, let's utilize this, see how it works. They continually adjust that, but we know that we need to get better in certain areas. We know we're doing well also, when we look at the data with growth, and we look at our ACT scores have improved, we're at the state average overall, and in three of the four other areas, we're above the state average. Our graduation, I think we have, what, seven students that graduated last year on time, but what, four have already graduated since?
Four.
And that's what our goal is, and we have, I think, two that are still here, that we're saying just stick around and keep working hard. So we have a desire to graduate every student, might not be on time, because that's up to them as they get a little bit older, about decisions they make, but we're always going to be there. So I know that we're, that we have, we have room to continue to grow, but I'm really looking forward to utilizing this data, and then we've also gotten together, and I told the board about this, with a gentleman named Eric Larson, who's kind of a consultant for us now, to help us utilize VISE Dash, which is Wisconsin Student Information, and that's going to really help us look at this data and be, I think, more proactive and be better at diagnosing and meeting the students' needs wherever they're at on their learning journey. So just once again, if you need, if you'd like to see those, it's right on our front page of our website. You just come down to report card, and all that information is here. You can also go here if you'd like to see other report cards from other areas of the state, you can go to, right here, and you can just choose whatever district you like. Anybody got questions? Comments? All right. Next, I'm going to introduce Debbie, and I had included this in your packet also, I'll give you a paper copy also, and this is the contract with the school district, with Fondland School District for our nursing services and health services, and also with services that help us to get information and.
And we'll leave these here in case anybody wants those.
Information about student perceptions and ideas of what's going on, and what Debbie will do, there's a lot of daddy here, she'll talk about the annual report about how we utilize health services, also about health attitudes, that's what the survey is. The big thing is, is the attitudes that students have about what they feel is in their life to help them be successful. That's what this is more about, is what the student's perception of what they feel they have in their life that will help them be successful, and what variables are impacting them. And this is, this along with, it's no longer teen screen, what is it called?
Y-screen.
Y-screen, that's right. Y-screen is, I think, some really incredible, we hear about mental health in our country and how that's having an impact on student learning and on safety. And this health assessment of, of looking at what people believe, that students believe their attitudes are, about what are there, what supports they have, along with Y-screen, are things that we're never going to get from a test about reading and math, but I think they're just as, if not more important about where our kids are at as they continue to grow up and cognitively, physically, and socially develop. So Debbie's going to talk about those two pieces along with seclusion and restraint report. And the one thing I could tell you about the seclusion restraint report is, we have students who have behavioral issues and situations, that's written in that, if they need to, they need to be in the appropriate way, and we have nonviolent crisis intervention training. Take that very seriously. We're fortunate to have somebody on staff, and Mr. Tom Kowish, that helps to train us and refresh along with Debbie. And I can state with full belief that what we're doing as far as utilizing seclusion restraint is appropriate, and I believe it helps the environment, those students, more than anything. So those are the two things that Debbie will briefly overview and talk about.
Okay, so if you turn to page two, the booklet is broken up into set the little tables, a narrative, and then there's a question by question breakdown of every single score of every grade that was given across. And we had a lot of data thrown at us tonight, so I said I would just summarize some points. On page two, it talks about the assets, and the assets are all the kinds of support systems that students feel they have, whether it's social, whether it's friends, whether it's family. And we are improving across all assets, and the narrative explaining what each of those is, is back in the narrative section later on. Also on page two, you're going to see we're down in terms of physical fights, and that the majority of our students feel safe at, while at school. And you can see those questions and those numbers and those, those are just things that we wanted to highlight. When I met with Marion Sheridan, we, we look for the high points and the things to watch as we go through this data. I'm going to quickly page through, and if you downturn to page three, cigarette smoking in our district as reported by students declining, and you can see those numbers right up at the top. It's broken down into the questions and the surveys from two thousand nine until two thousand thirteen. On page four, it talks about alcohol usage, and alcohol usage is at the lowest level that we've ever seen. Okay, and you can see that's, so these are really, really good things. Things are going better and they continue to get better. I mean, we're down in cigarette smoking, we're down in alcohol usage. And then turn to page five, and you see that marijuana use and other drug use is also on the decline. So in terms of our ATOD usage kinds of things, we're doing just what we want to do. We're getting a decrease in those statistics, which is awesome. As you go into the next section and pages, from six back...
While you're talking, just, and also, this is sometimes without the people coming out to the, the district and seeing what's going on here, there's still sometimes is a perception about the village and what goes on here. We have, and I can speak with, particularly with Sam, and while, and Adam now, as far as Elmacott's Wood, expulsions for alcohol, drug, or for alcohol and drug use, we're doing, it's been really well, and I think that's not just because, it's because of our leadership of our teachers, and because of our work with the village and our SRO program. I also think it's a lot to do with society and our parents that are doing a really good job and kids making better decisions. So our district and our school is, as this data shows from student perceptions, and also I can tell you from behavioral interactions, is we're going in the right direction.
All right, then in the next five to seven, all right, then in the next five to seven pages is the narrative that explains those highlights and things that I just said in detail by each category. And then following that are forty-three pages of what the survey actually looked at, question by question, age group, frequency, percent, and you can look at every single question and how it broke out. So there's a lot of data in there. Some other things that we noted about our wellness with Marion. There's a nationwide increase in allergies, and thus resulting in asthmatic increases in our district and in other places, and we're following that national trend. Also, a national trend in looking at the impact of concussions, especially with sports like football and other things, are, are looking at. We see it from pro sports all the way down, and we watch that locally, and are being very, very careful. Our diabetic numbers continue to be leveled off, we haven't gone up or down, but we all still have a very nice backup system where two to three people are trained in those per building in, in helping support the diabetics. Our secretaries are doing a wonderful job documenting all of the medication needs that we have. We just completed our bloodborne pathogens and had a hundred and thirty-nine employees pass the bloodborne pathogen quiz. We didn't have anybody fail it. Also, all of Aromar, and also all of the maintenance employees took that, raising that number even higher. In two thousand twelve, thirteen, last year, we are up to date on our immunizations, and Bridget Amadon is working on those now because within six weeks, we have to send out, you know, letters, one came out September twentieth, about being up to date with immunizations. Our people who come to school have to have the required immunizations to be here. And finally, we are also really, really strong in the number of school-based influenza shots that we gave to spouses and to staff members and their children last year. So those will be coming out, and they'll have days probably within the next month and a half on it. So that is just the summary of that, of those things. I'm not going to sit and go through every statistic and discuss them because it takes hours. Erin asked me then to move into the seclusion restraint report, and that was a sheet, one up from there, there you go. We have three schools, well, four actually, that we have to report data on, and I put the alternative schools in the middle. At the Early Learning Center, between seclusion and restraints that we have to report out, we had twenty-nine official reports of them last year. Between Elmwood and Amity, we had three students that had, thirty-four of them at Elmwood and Amity had two accounts there for last year, and at Friendship Learning Center, we had twenty accounts of that. You will see students are, and cannot be identified by name or number, so I refer to them as A, B, C, D, E, F, G. You will see that some of the students who may have shown up at one school, who were then placed at an alternative school, that might be the very same person, so that's why the repeat of that letter is there. And so that is our seclusion and report form. The next page that Erin was, that one, is our seclusion and report form that has to be filled out for every single event. So if a student runs out of a room or has to be taken to another room unwillingly, they have to be escorted, that would be a type of seclusion. A restraint, they have to have somebody who's actually trained in nonviolent crisis intervention training, which is what Tom and I do trainings on, we have people at every single building who do that. Those things are only, only, only used as last resorts. Most of the training that people go through involve the de-escalation and using a better voice and getting options and those things. You'll notice on the seclusion and restraint recording sheet that there are contacts that have to be made down, and some facts that they have to follow up on. These reports come to you, they don't have to be reported to the state, but we have to annually report these numbers to you. On the day that the seclusion or restraint is done, apparent contact is noted down on the bottom, as, and, as well as who made the contact. And the other side is also the administrative contact, and how did you notify the administrator if they were not part of it? Mr. Kowish and I are going to look at this form. One of the things that we're not quite happy about, and this was a DPI-recommended form, but in a very generic format, we want to beef this up a little bit and talk about, was it more of a seclusion or was it a restraint? Because you saw in the data that I put in the table, we separated those, and sometimes it could be both. We also have to be real specific about if they were taken into a room and asked to sit down to calm down, how long it was for? Was it for a minute, time in, time out, kind of thing? And so that reporting is something that we want to take a look at too. So that is our seclusion and report data. You'll see that it happens, and that we recorded more of the elementaries. Our high school and Bessie Allen here at the middle school, we don't put hands on at all in those kinds of things because we have our SRO officer available, and so we don't typically get seclusion and restraint forms from those two that are out.
And when you look at this, there's twelve students, and of those twelve students, two of whom are never even in our buildings. And that's just because of their behavior, and as I said earlier, it's a necessary thing that needs to be done in order to help them stay safe and other people, so.
If students transfer here from like districts like Milwaukee or Penoson, they were in alternative schools here, we don't put them back automatically into our public schools if they've been in a completely self-contained setting. We put them into alternative sites and tell everybody who to move up, so that's where Mr. State Officer brings some of those students that have never really put their feet on our soil here that way. Are there more questions?
When you try to contact your parents and you can't get a hold of them, what do you do then?
We go by the emergency card and make sure that one of the people on their contact list, whether it's guardian, whether it's grandparent, whether whoever's on that emergency card, somebody has to be notified, so. And, and some of the, some of the students, if they just have to take, be taken to a room to cool down for a little while, that doesn't make them a home. You know, after they cool down, they're very able often to come back, you know, work themselves up and out of it, come back to the classroom.
And you had twelve students like that?
We have twelve students, twelve students that have happened to across all of four schools.
Talking over five hundred and fifty kids. All right, at this time, is there, I know that the administrative team had shared things and their goals during the board workshop earlier. Starting October, they will be preparing their monthly reports. Also, they're doing a very good job at sending out weekly or bi-weekly newsletters. If you're interested in any of those, just give them an email, I'm sure they wouldn't mind CCing you too. Lot of good information that can keep you up to speed on what's happening. Another thing too is, just on our main website, make sure you keep checking on at the bottom, all of the main things that are going on should be on that calendar. So at this time, Samantha, we have Spirit Week, also homecoming, welcome back all alumni. You have some fun this week, and we take on the boxes and football this Friday, and it's going to be a lot of fun. And that's all I have.
Seeing them. Moving on to new business. First item is the point, Eddie April, Kim Roden, Jenny Stahl, Linda Krebsbach, Dr. Jan Root, and Luanne Urbahn as local education representatives for IEP meetings for special education students during the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen school year. I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Chisholm.
Every year we do this, our administrators will always be, if possible, there to, to be that local education, or represent the school district during those IEPs. But if we can't, this allows more flexibility, and these are very highly competent ladies that do a great job, and I feel very comfortable having them represent when we can.
Questions? Seeing the roll call?
Duffy.
Yes.
Chisholm.
Yes.
Hot Cash, Pila.
Yes.
Motion carried. Next item is approved resignation of Pat Colby, Horace Mann High School JV baseball coach. I will make that motion.
Second.
Pat does a great job, he's involved in, owned lots of things in his resignation here. You'll see that he picked something else up in order to help out, so he's a, he's a great asset to our, our students and, you know, just, there's a lot going on, and he feels his talents can be used in different ways, and he's the kind of guy where he resigns one thing, but you'll see he's going to add something else on his plate. He's a great, he's one of the, he's a great, great part of our, our learning, coaching staff.
Questions or comments? Seeing the roll call?
Duffy.
Yes.
Hot Cash, Pila.
Yes.
Chisholm.
Yes.
Motion carried.
The next item, can I ask that you can approve all the recommendations as one? I'll entertain a motion to approve extra duty contracts for the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen school year. One, Anthony Eraskelson, freshman boys basketball at Horace Mann High School. Adam Mickey, student council advisor for Bessie Allen Middle School. Eric Wiege, JV baseball, Horace Mann, or JV baseball coach at Horace Mann High School. Pat Colby, seventh grade baseball, excuse me, seventh grade basketball, baseball on mine, and then Josh Walter, eighth grade basketball. I'll make that motion. Motion by Mr. Pila.
I'll second.
Mr. Hot.
Second.
Hey, apologize for my thicker fingers up top, but just, these contracts won't go through two, twenty-one oh four, so we're not looking for over one, nine-year contracts here. I don't think they, they, they go for that. Anthony is doing a great job as our portal director, he's also WI official. He and his family went a lot of things at golf outings, a lot, he's just a lot of positive energy, and really looking forward to him joining Chris's basketball program and working hard, and Mike and Chris highly recommend him. Adam Mickey, who does a great job at the middle school, has a seventh grade language arts teacher, also coaches, will be taking over the reins of, or I recommend that he take over the reins of student council at Bessie Allen that Kaiser had served for many years. And then here, Wedge Wiege, JV baseball. Our new coach, Eric Kurswell, and Mike have both nominated this gentleman, I have some more information. That Joe is a graduate from WLA in two thousand eight, he went on to play baseball in Minnesota for one year. He came back and was asked to participate in the program at WLA as an intern coach while the head coach was away during the early part of that year. He's been around baseball his entire life and has a great love and respect for the game. Currently is working as a graphic designer and has developed a new logo for our baseball team that looks a lot like Oklahoma State. You see, it's, it's good. He looks forward to helping our program, and the kids win, helping them mature, the young man. He said, "I feel that as a coach, it's not only our job to teach the game, but to teach them about life as well." I know Eric is very excited about having, or that Eric is very excited about having Eric come and help out with the baseball book.
No, you said Eric, you said Joe, I'm confused. You said Joe, did you say Joe in the letter? Did I hear that wrong? I heard Joel, is it Eric is the?
Or you called him Joe when you started reading or something.
So is it?
Mr. Wiege. I'll make, it might be Eric, Joe, or Joe, Eric, or maybe he goes by both, but it's the last name is Wiege, so I'll make sure that I clarify.
It's her.
Not Joe, it's one that's on there.
I heard you say Joel, that was confusing.
My bad. And then Pat Colby, we spoke about grade, and he's going to be taking over seventh grade, to round out Pat's, or not, to round out Chris's basketball crew. Is finally Josh Walter. Josh is a Kawn High School graduate from two thousand two. He played three years of RST basketball and was all-conference selection. He lives here in North Fondleac with his wife Chrissy, and he's coached the eighth grades' traveling team for the past two years. And he comes very highly recommended by Chris also.
He also was assistant to the Lloyds for several years when they were coaching here at the Barceland, like, I'm a particular guy, I'm pretty sure.
I'm not.
Two thousand two.
He's a good guy. I know Chris knows him quite well.
Yeah, because Josh is nephew, he's been coaching him, and that's why he's kind of progressed and moved along to the eighth grade. Chris thinks highly of him as well as Anthony, just interviewing, Nancy's been around, just we've had open gyms, he's been around with the dad. The unique thing is when your dad's retired, and his dad's a former basketball coach from Grafton, we're going to see quite a bit, we're going to get two for one. His dad is already, so he's fired up already, so it's really going to be an experience for those kids, they're going to get, they're going to get what they need to do at that level, it's going to be awesome for the program. Real excited about that, not only Anthony, but his dad as well.
And I can say for the first time in a long time, well, I think we might have some middle school volleyball, but we're sat, coaches, so.
Any other questions, comments? Roll call?
Pila.
Yes.
Hot Cash, Chisholm.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Next item on the agenda is, eight o'clock for them, not for us. I will make a motion to go to closed session for one, discussion of contract issuance and administrative reviews pursuant to state statute nineteen point eight-five, print one, print C. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Pila. That is at seven fifty-nine.
And then this one we do.
Duffy.
Yes.
Pila.
Yes.
Hot Cash. Welcome aboard, before the avenue grew up here. And I was next door with that gentleman, that gentleman.
I wouldn't mind going through. I have a little question. Okay, I was interested in how you... I was interested in how many kids, like, the...
Thanks, John. No, that's okay.
Stickers, I like all of that.
Oh, for sure. I was going to, I just wanna make sure.
Slap him up. I know we can't do that.
No. Will I bring it on?
I know. I understand why this partnership is so bad, Mrs. Johnson. You're acting on my ruler. Okay, thank you. Yes, we need to talk about students.
Yes.
And I suppose this is probably the worst week to try and get them scheduled.
I know you're talking over there. Oh, boy.